Yeah.
Good, all right. Welcome everyone to the Town of Brookfield Select Board Meeting, Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. Please stand and pledge your flag.
Pledge your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is being recorded in livestream. You're the only other ones that I can see recording. Yep. Signed warrants.
Okay, for fiscal year 2025-07, April warrant in the amount of $193.709.54. For fiscal year 2025-07, accounts payable warrant in the amount of $142,219.26. And lastly, for fiscal year 25-07, withholding warrant in the amounts of $103,700.69.
All right. Item number one, interim highway superintendent, general discussion salary, grant writing position, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, before we get, I guess, into the details, one of the questions I wanted to put out to the board is, in considering the compensation and the job responsibilities for the interim superintendent, is whether or not the board would like to enter into a contract, a short-term contract for the interim superintendent, or if they choose not to. If the board chooses to enter into the short-term contract, then I believe that those discussions and details should be discussed in executive session for reasons exemption number two.
Yeah, have you verified, Ron, that that's one of the positions that we're entitled to contract? Because I think there's very explicit positions that were entitled to contract.
I have not did before, though, for an.
We had a, it was a letter, but it wasn't technically a contract.
Oh.
So it was an offer letter, not, so there's a difference between an offer letter and a contract. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't a, there was like, like written terms, but it's the same as an offer letter.
Okay.
So, an offer letter, although it's.
No, I see, I see.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fundamental difference between the two, though there are legal implications to giving somebody an offer letter, it's not the same as a contract.
Yeah.
And I remember from, and I don't, I don't remember which positions, I remember at one point we had wanted to do a contract for a position, I don't know if it was highway superintendent or not, and Kelly advised us that it wasn't, like, legal in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, I did not talk to KP Law to have a legal opinion with regards to contract for the superintendent position.
Okay.
So if we do not enter a contract, then obviously the discussion would have to be in open session.
Well, I think you can, I mean, the exemption, I mean, I wanted to make, I wanted to specify that so that if we, if we did go into executive and came out and it wasn't technically a contract, that somebody didn't, like, file a complaint against us because it wasn't technically a contract. However, I think if you do look at exemption number two, it does allow for negotiations with non-union personnel in general, as well as, as for, for a contract, but I didn't want to specify that aspect of it.
Yep, fair enough, fair enough.
I think that would, I think that would in part be up to Lindsay as well, correct? Whether.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, both parties would have to agree.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purposes of negotiating with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel for interim highway superintendent and return to open session after.
You want to do that, or do you want to go through and get people out and then do the, sorry, Lindsay?
No, that's okay. We can, we can fly through this agenda and then.
Well, that's, that's.
Get the rest of you that I'm in a rush.
Okay, so.
I'm good with that. Okay.
I guess, so then I'll make a motion that we take stuff out of order.
Why make that motion?
What's that?
I guess, should I make that motion, or?
No, I can make that motion, it's your meeting. I think you can make that determination without my motion, but.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Appointment, Highway Advisory Committee. Does anyone like to make a motion for the two candidates?
We have three candidates now, right?
Yes, there was a third letter of interest that was submitted literally just today. So there are now three.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Emory Manning to the Highway Advisory Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resignation, Police Officer Patrick Clements.
Make a motion that we accept the resignation with regrets, send him a note.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment, Police Officer John Marty.
I'll make appointment, I'll make a motion to appoint, well, we'll bring it up in discussion. So I'll make a motion to appoint Police Officer John Marty.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I just was questioning, how does it work when he's not graduated the police academy? And he's, so I'm not sure, did you have discussion with the chief, Ron?
I haven't, but obviously he would, he has to be a graduate of the academy, so he can be a certified police officer. So the appointment would be contingent upon the successful graduation from the academy.
In December.
That's actually not the way that it works.
That's, that's, in my, my previous encounters.
Okay, that's not, that's not how we've done it historically, because one of the things he's trying to do here is that he's trying to lock him in after graduation, right?
Yeah.
So, historically speaking, we've even hired people and paid for the academy and paid them while they were at the academy in order to do that. So the appointment would be effective October 6th. We'd start paying him while he's at the academy, unfortunately, is the way that this would work. If we vote to do this tonight, we'd be paying him while he's at the academy. His understanding would be that the expectation is when he graduates, he comes to work for us. Yep.
I don't understand that.
Because once he graduates the academy, I mean, what he explained to me is, if we don't make this offer to him now, once he graduates the academy, someone's going to grab him. So this is a way to grab him before someone else does.
And we've got a pretty, and, and, and I know exactly where you're going to go, is that several years ago, we had a lot of problems where we pay for people's academy and they bail on us.
Well, he could bail them in and he gets out when he's academy trained, right? And there's no way we can tie his hands to keep him, I don't understand that.
So, we, we actually, so, other, in the past, we have actually had him sign a letter that says.
You can't, you can't do that legally, you can't bind him.
Well, actually, you can, you can say that, you, you.
He could leave at any time.
If we were, if we were paying for his school, he would have to pay the school back, but he's already paid for his school. So absolutely, you're right, we can't bind him, we could wind up paying him for while he's in the school and he wouldn't wind up working for us, okay? But it is a judgment call, and either we support the chief or we don't support the chief.
I mean, it's been an ongoing problem for 35 years that I'm aware of, so I don't have an answer.
Yeah, our recent track record has been good, I mean, we, we, even the folks we paid to get to, to school, they stayed three, four years, which isn't great, but it's not terrible either, so. And it, it's not the, you know, they graduate and bail. Now, of course, maybe Mr. Marty will make a liar out of me, or at least an erroneous person out of me, but, you know, I would assume that the chief knows who he's talking to.
Mr. Chairman, I'll weigh in on this, you can give it to me.
Do you have anything else?
I guess I'm still digesting it, I did not realize that was what was taking place.
Yeah, you can think on it.
Do you want to go ahead?
We discussed this with the police chief a few times, and he's trying not to do this because we, the taxpayers, are paying him by the hour, is he paying for the school and will he be paying for that too?
He already paid for the school.
He's already paid.
So we're going to be paying him how, how many months, six?
No.
No.
No. He, I believe he graduates from the academy in early December.
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks, and what is, what are we going to be paying him per week?
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah, so what's that, roughly, eight hundred dollars a week?
Yeah, I'd say in that vicinity.
Yeah. Eight, nine hundred dollars a week, about nine hundred.
Close to a thousand, but.
Yeah, so call it.
Yeah, call it a thousand dollars.
Seven, seven grand, eight grand.
Yeah.
Why should we, taxpayers, keep paying for these officers, they don't, they don't stay that long? The chief's trying to, he's been trying to get people with academy certified, because we keep paying for these guys and then they just take off on us, we're paying for it.
Actually, most of the, I think the last two that we've paid for them to go to school, they've stayed three and five years respectively, so I don't know that you can define that as taken, I, I don't know you can define that as taken off on us.
I don't think they've stayed that long.
I think they have, actually.
It's just a practice that we're having here, that we should not be paying to put someone through school on the town property, is my, is my point.
Well, and the last candidate.
The last candidate, right?
No, the last candidate, he actually wanted us to pay for their schooling, which I think would have been more than this.
Oh, way more.
Yeah.
But to pay eight thousand dollars and he starts work after December, it's, that's just the, but I, you know, maybe that's what we have to do now with the lack of.
Well, and the fact that he lives in West Brookfield, hopefully, I mean, unless West Brookfield grabs him for his insurance.
So is this going to continue being a practice in our town? When the chief said that he was going to try to, is it because we're shorting in on police officers? Is that the, is that the problem happening, that they do not have the certification of being in the academy?
From my understanding, this was in the works before Patrick resigned. He's been talking about this for probably the last month about doing this.
Agreed, but the, Pat, Patrick's resignation kind of caught him flat-footed. I don't think anyone in the department realized that he was ready to go.
Yeah.
So why don't you just get, get the academy and then come here and we'll hire him? We'll save a spot, so you get a job when you get the academy.
I guess the problem is that he could go anywhere and possibly get hired now, and then we would lose him.
So what, what, what is there to, what are we going, how are we going to keep him?
Well, that, that's my sticking point, you can't force him to stay.
Right. All right, I made my point, I just don't think it's, so.
I'm still going to make a motion to appoint him, so I don't know if I've got a second or not, but.
I'm not ready to second this thing.
Well, I mean, the more I'm thinking about it, I think I want to, if we could hold off a week, I mean, I was going to talk about that at one point, because there's stuff that's beginning to accrue on the agenda if we want to do a meeting next week.
I'd be willing to have a meeting next week, because I'd like to speak to the chief as well, it would buy me a week to do that.
The question?
Yep.
Is this just, is that a common practice, or is that just something mutually exclusive? Is that a common practice?
I think it depends on the community and where their workforce level is, and whether they need help or not. It's, and I don't think there's any written, it, it fluctuates from town to town and from circumstance to circumstance depending if they're shorthanded or not.
I mean, there's a certain amount of goodwill that you earn with the, there's a certain amount of goodwill that you do actually earn with the people, showing that you have, functionally have their back and the likelihood of somebody, and I hear what folks are saying.
Or leverage in the, or the candidate, too.
Right. So.
I'd be willing to have a meeting next week and make a decision next week, I just did not.
There's a couple of things that are going through my head that I, I think I want to do some research on, too.
Just a quick question, just out of my own personal curiosity, is there, do we have leverage? A person comes out of the academy as far as what salary we can offer, or is that just sort of?
No, it's.
That's contract.
Set by contract.
Set by contract, so there's.
And we used to have an academy rate, and we no longer have an academy rate in the contract.
So, so that's basically, is this a question of location versus any other town, so they all have to offer the same rates?
No, every town pays different.
Yeah.
So we pass it over, or what are we doing?
Well, there's a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion.
So you didn't second it? I'm not going to sec, I, I. I've had a lot on my plate, so I haven't really looked at this one too much, and now I have a question.
I, I could certainly invite the chief to a meeting, it's to be maybe next week.
Yeah.
And he can explain the rationale behind it.
I'd be more than willing to speak to him individually to not have to call him in, but it's, you know, it's the board's call.
And I only talked to him briefly on the topic, and I mean, it sounded good when I spoke to him, but.
I've had so many conversations with him over the years over the same topic, and this is, this is a quarter loaf versus usually, we're, usually we're serving up a full loaf, this is only a quarter loaf.
Right.
I can't believe that we, we, we've done, I mean, it's been usual customary for us to actually go ahead, and if the chief has enough confidence in the individual, based on his interviews and his relationships with him, to recommend sending him to the whole damn academy and paying him while he's there and paying for the school. And, and I hear what Mr. Holcraft is saying, but I think the statistics are on my side, and I, and maybe the only thing I would want is for Holly to get the statistics on the fact that I think the, the least time we retain somebody when we paid for the academy was two and a half or three years, okay? This person is willing to sign up with us after they've already paid for the academy and commit to come work for us. I get that people feel that's extra money, but I think it's an investment in, in showing that we value the officers that we're bringing into the community.
I don't have any problem with what you're saying, and I agree, I agree to some of what you're saying. Well, the problem that I have with it is, I want to know, are there other applicants? Have there been other applicants that are academy trained?
No.
And have, is he just wanting to groom a particular officer, and that's why he's steadfast?
I, I know, yeah, I know he's been dying for an applicant. So what my question and concern is, is a little bit different, is what happens if something happens to this guy before he comes due and we've now paid him? How do we?
If he's unemployed and he's, say, injured at the academy, it would be handled just like injured on duty.
And he's getting benefits.
Correct.
Yep. And it would be considered injured on duty, because if he's injured at the academy, then it would be an injured on duty.
Yeah, we own it, definitely.
Yep, we would own it, for sure. Now we could sue the state, but.
So.
I don't, I don't see a big deal at table in it for one week, but. Fred, let me get someone else's.
Oh, go ahead.
Isn't there any way we could feed back the cost of the academy over their timeframe with, with?
He's, we, we could, we could if we were paying for his academy, but the, the salary they get at the academy.
I understand that, but how about, okay, you're talking about eight thousand dollars, how about you offer him a thousand dollars a month? To pay, to pay off part of your academy while you work at Brookfield. He's full-time now, and now we're going to give you some of your academy money back. Just an incentive.
To stay.
To stay. And you're paying for it, but he's going to have, if he wants that out of his life, and each and every so often, he'd have to stay again.
It's a pretty good incentive.
Well, yeah.
I think we'd have to do a little research.
I think, I think the, the problem, I think the problem is because it's not in the contract, while the contract sets minimums, fundamentally, we can't offer somebody something over and above.
More than another person.
So, so I think the challenge we may have is we might have to go back into negotiations with the police union in order to get that.
But I think that's a, it's a more viable way to keep people. You, you're going to get, you're going to get more money to help pay for whatever you agree upon, but you're going to get it on a monthly basis, so how would you figure that out? Until you're, like you said, you've paid for full academies, plus paid people. This way, here, this person or some person puts their own money in the academy, but when you come to work at Brookfield, fresh out of the academy, we would like to pay your schooling fees, but it's going to be done at a rate of so much a month or so much a, two weeks, however you decide. It's wait for somebody to come to Brookfield, work here, and get their schooling reimbursed. The cost of schooling reimbursed. Other than that?
And who pays for, who's paid for the other academies, for the other officers and those?
It all depends, I mean, it's no, there's no set standard. We, the town has paid for academies, so I'll.
But not a lot.
No, I, I invest time, right?
Yeah, we've paid for at least two people to go to the academy since I've been a selectman. Like I said, I think one we kept for, let's say it was right about two, two, two and a half years, and the other one I think stayed four or five.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think he'll flee, I just, because I have some doubts, I just want to now take a minute to think about it.
And the chief's been a pretty decent judge of character.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only thing I can say, right? He has his moments on some stuff, but typically he's made some good hiring decisions.
Again, and I've talked to him for a month about this, and it seemed like a good idea, and. But I don't really want to delay it either. I mean, you're good with it.
I made the motion.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm.
I asked for one week to.
Right.
Do some research, I'm not going to second.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to also push it off, because I want to flush out.
Would you like me to invite the chief to our next meeting, or?
You don't need to on my part, I'm, I'm going to go and visit with him.
I'm going to do some research, and then I, I can go to him directly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll tell him to be careful what he says, if he wants to talk to me, so that we don't wind up running afoul of him.
Personnel Committee Appointment, Beth Coughlin, discussion. And do we want to?
Take lead.
Who's taking lead?
Says Ron will take lead.
Yeah. This is to correct, or I guess amend, the decision that was made several meetings ago with regards to both Mr. Chafee and Ms. Coughlin wanting to be on the Personnel Board. There was, I guess, issues with regards to having two selectmen on at the same time. Subsequently, we've had a resignation, there's now a full-time opening. As a result, Ms. Coughlin could certainly step in to fill that vacancy on a full-time basis, which would also allow Mr. Chafee to have a, a full membership, if you will, as well, instead of the kind of half-year membership that we had. So I guess that's issue number one. The other potential issue that has been raised is whether or not there's really value added, for lack of a better term, with having a personnel board, especially since you, at this point, you would have two select board members on the committee. It's not as if the other members of the Personnel Board bring HR, private sector HR experience into the equation, so one of the questions is whether or not the board even wants to have a Personnel Board, or would the board like to accept, as it has been doing recently, Personnel Decisions.
And the charge of Personnel is really job descriptions and salary.
Correct.
Because any HR functions are handled by the treasurer.
Yes, benefits and things along those lines, that's, that's all the purview of the treasurer.
Do we have anybody else that wants to be on the Personnel Committee?
Not that I'm aware of, Karen, do we have any, anything in the pipeline?
Yes, they're, they're on Personnel Committee, I just, I can't pull it up right here. Let me go check, I'll run it out to my other computer.
So, so in speaking to Lori regarding it, Personnel Committee makes recommendations to the selectmen that the selectmen then put into effect. So essentially, the Personnel Board doesn't really do any decision-making, they just send it forward to the selectmen, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah. I could double-check the bylaw, but that's generally how the Personnel Board works.
So based on that, I don't know, I don't know why there would be a need for the Personnel bylaw or Personnel Committee at that point, if we're struggling for members, then I think it's probably better for the Select Board to just take the whole charge.
How many do we, members do we have if I don't go on?
I believe it's four out of, out of the five, in fact, well, let's see.
Oh, isn't it?
No, she doesn't have them listed.
Isn't it Brenda, Lori, Sharon?
Brenda.
And Holly, and Holly resigned.
Holly resigned, correct. Brenda, and I'm not sure Lori's on there.
I'm sorry, Dave Ford is on it as well, is that right?
Okay, Doug Ford, yes.
Doug Ford, yeah. So maybe Lori's not on it.
Yeah, Lori, I do not believe Lori is. Sharon is.
Sharon and.
By, by virtue of treasurer office.
So here's the thing, I think historically we've had values separating that work from the board's eleven.
I don't have a problem with it, I only thought because you and I were both going to be on it.
No, my only pro, my only concern fundamentally was that. Doesn't matter, so I'll stay off, let's see if we can find somebody else to fill out the board.
Okay.
If I'd like to interject, just in my seven years' experience in trying to go through with an advisory committee, things that I thought the Personnel Committee had, had done, I think it's important there's an independent body because of all of the ad hoc work that we had to do through the last seven years, no one knew who was on first, what was on second, I don't know what was on third. And I still am not clear, and at least for financial work, that we do the majority of the issues that we have detention about are all related to salary, grade, roles, all of that. So, again, I know the selectmen are very busy with all the stuff that they do, so if it is a way to keep the Personnel Board and make sure that it's doing its proper function, then I would certainly, as a citizen and as the chairman of the advisory committee, welcome that, because I know, and again, I'm preaching to the choir, but the last three town meetings that I've been there, there's been confusion about what our numbers reflect, because we weren't quite sure what something had gone on in the Personnel or not gone on, and it just, you know, I think it needs to be visible, viable, and vibrant, as opposed to being, you know, something else.
The bigger, the problem is just getting the volunteers, that's, that seems to be the issue, so.
Hallelujah, you know, and I'll, I'll tell you my dumb story for trying to fight over the advisory committee. So, and again, that's where I've emphasized, and again, I'm not getting on a horse, but the, the Select Board really need to push more from a communication standpoint to get volunteers involved in, in Brookfield, you know, if you like the community, we all, you know, live here, we love it. We need to get people to put aside a little bit of their time to help with some of these committees, and there's no other way, it's going to be viable.
You bored yet, Kermit? You've got HR experience. Kept him from trying.
And just to confirm, Karen has indicated, yes, Sharon, Brenda, Doug Ford, and Richard, the current members, so there's just the one vacancy.
Yep, great, so they can get it more.
How many other members are independent? Like, I mean, I heard we're kind of employed.
One.
Just one?
So Steve, can we get an ad put out there on the town website, looking?
I think there's been one.
Is there, yeah?
There's been one, but we could write it explicitly and look, and, and ask for somebody with either HR experience or, or, or whether it's small.
I mean, if we all of a sudden had volunteers for that, I'd surrender my position as well.
Yeah. I may walk across the street, because I think Brenda, um, I don't know what's Brenda's last name.
Karen, or who?
No, Brad's, Brad, Brendan Brad.
Parrish.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it is.
Different.
No, she's talking to someone other than Brenda Parrish.
Folks that live, folks that live on the common. I'll, I'll go knock on your door. Can't think of her last name right now.
So you wanna just table this, then?
Yeah. Well, we don't need to appoint me. Let's just move forward. You've got four. You can run a meeting with four. You only need three of the four to show up.
So let's keep going.
Okay. Capital Improvement Planning Committee Appointments, Marty Banish.
I'll make a motion. Oh, he's, but it says he's current. He's already on.
No, it says current members are...
Oh, be, okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Marty Banish to the Capital Improvement Committee.
Say it.
Uh, Discussion. I do have a quick question about this altogether.
Yep.
Is, especially where Marty's now gonna be on Advisory and Capital.
Typically, Capital has, has a representative from Advisory.
So why don't we just have like a Finance Committee that covers both tasks?
I think that the Advisory Committee, again, we have enough going on just with the, the annual budget to do long-term capital planning. Really should be a separate
Beast.
Committee with people who have the time to do it. Marty was basically, before that, was, I'm trying to remember the gentleman. But whoever's been the Vice Chairman of the Advisory Committee traditionally has been
On Capital.
On the Capital, and they report back, and then we sort of coordinate it. Capital Improvement Committee is up with the plan, and they let us know what's on the, their, their wish list, and then we, sometimes we have a joint meeting, we had in the past. But I think it's too much work for, and again, the, the way that our Advisory Committee is, is set up right now, is to have the people in the time.
Because he's gonna report everything that happens at Capital Planning over to Advisory?
Right, I mean, he'll add an important voice also, but it, it's basically, we just...
It's too much, is what you're saying. Okay, all right.
We have enough going on with the ears, despite the forums and things like that.
Go ahead, Kermit.
Will you be on the Capital Planning Committee now?
It's only, there's only, with, with Marty, it'll be three. We need two more.
I think we, I'm not, I kinda disagree with him a little bit. I think that we could get, we got three, we could get, do a, do a, more people and just combine. I found when I was on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, there were a lot of interchanges between the buying of capital projects, how it was affecting the operating budget, and conversely. And I know we had Advisory to people who were supposed to come, but unfortunately, that didn't happen during period I was there, where we had people from our committee going to the Advisory, or the Advisory coming to us. So, I don't know, it seems to me we had eight or nine, seven or nine people on a Financial Committee, uh, working together. I know they're working, we're, we're working on during the year, working on capital projects, a lot of ERM stuff. But I don't know, it's hard to find people, but I think the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is very important. The vetting process for capital projects. It's not fair to have a department head that's come to the selectmen with a capital project and it hasn't been vetted by the, the Capital Committee.
I see what you're saying, but Jeff is saying that he doesn't feel like they could even handle it, based on, right, based on the yearly work that you...
We're, we're sort of informally doing it now, but what I remember was when, when it was you and, and Peter, was Peter's ass.
Peter O'Connell.
I mean, they would go, you know, they had a whole bunch of, and it was voluminous. Lee Far was, was our contact over there, and then he would come. And that was the last one we hit, was five years ago, I think. But I think by bylaw, the Capital Improvement Committee is, is supposed to be up and functioning, includes, doesn't include someone from the school, the elementary school?
So we changed the bylaw a couple of years ago, and it actually doesn't have, I think, as many, um...
Town people?
Like, like directed positions. Like, it's a five-person committee. I think it states a preference for certain peo, personnel. We'd have to pull up the bylaw. Do you have it handy, or no?
Yeah, 'cause that, that's what I understood, and one of the reasons why there was an issue is because the elementary school couldn't coordinate with the other people on it, and so it's tough to get a meeting time, but, um... I, I'll stand by...
But I believe that changed.
Okay, but I mean, I'll, I'll stand by my, when we had a nine-person Advisory Committee, then yes, maybe the two could combine, and then we have five people and, and, you know. I, I just, I don't see it, but, um... Right now, if you can start with three, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I think we could start with three, and we can just, we can pull up the old plan and, um...
Right, because of the...
See, you know, see what, see what, see what we've completed and, and, and start to put together the next five years. I mean...
'Cause I mean, the, the things that we were concerned about over the last two or three years was, again, was the, the elementary school roof project, which the numbers are wildly range all over the place, depending on what you want to do for, for paring it. And then again, you were mentioning the highway, there's always, there's always fire trucks, everything else, but if they're not planned in sequence, then, you know, it's not, it's not the right way to do it. I think it was, it was certainly, Rachel, you were doing it with Peter, and it was sort of a part of it. I guess maybe the volunteers got burned out. The same, same with our Advisory Committee.
Well, I think it's important that when we put a committee together, that when a committee makes a recommendation, that the Select Board's sick to it. Because I know for a fact that was a good reason that it kind of went away. Right?
Yes.
We brought plans forward, and they weren't even brought to the town meeting. Yep.
Sorry?
They didn't even make it to the town meeting floor fundamentally. The Select Board kind of killed them.
I'll be frank, we had the Department agreed to the Capital Plan, and, um... Somehow it never got to the floor that way, and, uh... So I don't want to get into...
No, I, I get it, but it's important.
That's literally what I resigned.
Yeah, so it's important that when a plan, when we put a committee together, that we take the recommendation and move forward, right? So it doesn't negate...
Clearly you should
Yeah.
Vet it, think about it, and, but not just summarily discuss it. I mean, frankly, I was just, I was startled. I was on vacation and out of the country when I got a call and said sixteen out of nineteen Capital Plans we put forward were not being put on the line, and they were approved by the Department. So if you're gonna put a group together, I respectfully ask that the, uh... The Select Board view those things carefully.
So I think we're gonna end up having to move on again.
Okay. Community Development Block Grant.
Did we actually vote Marty on?
Oh, sorry.
What did you guys decide?
Yeah, I did a motion.
We went to discussion.
Second, we went to discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Marty's been chomping at the bit for the last two years to continue on, 'cause he was on it before, and then somehow it disappears.
Who's on the Capital Improvement Committee now?
Right now, it's just me, Lori, and Marty.
You're on, and Marty and Lori.
Lori. We have two more slots, so... You have that T-shirt.
I will say the last report I read was perfectly with...
All right, so Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointments, Mary Lou Knight.
I'd make a motion to appoint Mary Lou Knight to the...
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. American Rescue Plan Act Valence and Allocations. Ron will take lead.
Can I step back? Who's on the seat in each?
Bruce, me, and Bill Simpson.
Bill Simpson?
Bill Simpson.
And?
And now Mary Lou.
And now Mary Lou.
And?
Myself and Bruce Clark.
Oh, Bruce, you're back on it? Where are you?
Oh, he left.
Oh, good. Oh, good. All right. Thank you.
Ron?
Yes, with regards to ARPA, I just wanted to remind the, the Board that we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in which to allocate our remaining funds. As of right now, we have eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars that have been unallocated and available for, for use. We also have sixty thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars that's been allocated, but actually not spent, or with the breakdown being forty-two thousand and sixty-seven dollars that were previously allocated for town hall ballroom renovations, but have not been spent. And then we have the eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for the police station engineering and the insulation project, if you will. Obviously, we won't need any of the money for the police station insulation project due to the earmark that Senator Durant has provided for us. And I guess the additional forty-two thousand for town hall renovations, that's something that's gonna be discussed at next week's Town Hall Improvement Committee's meeting to see if there are some, some projects that might be able to utilize that money. But if not, obviously, depending on what happens with town hall improvements, we still have a considerable amount of money that have to be...
Where did that forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy get generated from? How did that number?
Let's see, that was originally allocated by the Board at, at a hundred thousand dollars. And in fiscal year twenty-four, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars were actually expended.
So that was, so we spent fifty-eight thousand to paint the upstairs?
Um, yeah, I, I'm not sure exactly what the renovations were for...
Maybe it was forty-three. No, it was right here. Forty-two.
No, it was fifty-seven.
No, fifty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nearly fifty-eight. It was expended in fiscal year twenty-four.
I don't think it was just paint, though. There was, there's a, there's a lot of other work incorporated in that.
And they did all those sills, or they fixed a bunch of things up there.
So, what I, basically, what I wanted to, you know, may, maybe, not necessarily hit the panic button, but it, we are to the point where we probably do have to consider how, how we want to allocate the remaining funds. We, we do have a fallback, if, if you will. I have discussed it with the town accountant, Lori, and she'd indicated that any funds that are not allocated, the Board certainly has the ability to allocate those into a stabilization-type fund prior to twelve thirty-one, twenty-four, and that way, they'll be encumbered. We'd be able to utilize them at a, at a later date, and we, we still won't have to return anything to the Treasury.
I was just gonna say, some of the expenditures that we raised and appropriated to fix for the library, the fire station, some of those monies that have not been spent, we could probably put the, that in this and return that other money to the General Fund.
Absolutely, cor, correct. There are very few strings attached, if you will, with regards to how this is...
I mean, right now, we should probably go ahead and rescind the police station engineering, the eighteen thousand.
That was gonna be my suggestion.
Well, we pretty well did, right?
No, we, I'll give you a mo, I'll give you a motion, I'll give you a motion to rescind the vote, uh, of the, the allocation of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for the police station engineering.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And then, uh...
What about the windows?
I'm gonna give you a motion to, um, well, actually, no, let's wait until the Town Hall Improvement Committee.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to allocate more towards whatever they need, 'cause I know there's some things that need to be done here.
What about the windows? Again, I reported back to you guys that Lindsay said that we would be eligible to submit a grant come February or March, right in there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, why? 'Cause it's an insulation type of thing?
Well, it was, uh, the gentleman I spoke with was, he ordered us window repairs. I guess you can't tactically replace the windows.
Right.
It's historical, honey, but window repairs, whatever that sounds like.
So I, you know, I thought it was probably worth waiting to see if we could get a sizable amount for that.
And realizing that we did have a fairly large amount of money left with regards to ARPA, as well as in our free cash at the last Department Head meetings, I did ask Department Heads to at least start considering, are there any projects that they might be interested in at least putting out there or proposing to the Select Board for either ARPA or for free cash utilization? I did receive back a, a few, um, in the back, this is a floor right here, it indicated, um, there is a exterior door at the Emergency Squad Building that she has an estimate to replace at forty-five hundred dollars. And there's also a new roof at the ambulance station with an estimate of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Now, would those be eligible for the ARPA money?
Yes, they would be eligible for ARPA.
What, what door, Don, 'cause I talked to Peter, and he got, he got money at the last annual town meeting to make repairs. Was, is this the same, or is this different?
This is for the ambulance. This is an ambulance door to the back of our office.
So it's an interior door for forty-five hundred dollars?
Not an interior. It's an exterior door. And the only reason it, they gave me an estimate so high is that they, one of the doors they replaced on the fire station, they found that because it's such an old building, when they took the framing out, put the new frame in, there was nothing, no supports to hold it, and they had to have a mason come in and level down the doorway.
Door was older, too.
That's what that one cost. They, they don't know what they're gonna find when they pull this out. Hopefully, it won't take a major rebuild.
It, it won't take the forty-five hundred, but they're, but they did the estimate, assuming they have to do the masonry work.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
And the, the ambulance, I'm just gonna have to be, it's been leaking for a while, but our, our roof's been leaking. Possibly when the Fire Department gets the parapet fixed, it will stop leaking. Uh, but it, it just, that was, uh, around sixteen thousand or something. I knew that was just putting everything out there. Uh, we're also gonna need to get a, our garage door opener. We're gonna need to get another industrial garage door opener, 'cause ours doesn't work. Keep trying with it, but... So those are just some of the needs.
Okay.
And, and as I said, I mean, we, we do have a little bit of time, but I, like I said, I just wanted to make sure it stayed on everyone's radar screen.
I'll just keep adding it to the agenda.
Yeah. I, I did get two other requests. They were both from the Fire Department. One was to add ten thousand dollars for the asset repair and replacement account, and the other...
Oh, should we, hold on.
Yep.
That's for the next agenda item.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it, I personally would, would not like to see ARPA money used for that, because these are really more operational, and certainly would make more sense in a special, so I'll...
So we, so we've gone from ARPA to now a special town meeting.
Yeah, unless there's other questions with regards to, to ARPA?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So the other requests, as we kind of segue into the, the special, I'll, I'll finish up my...
Yeah, I do have one question for, for Donna. So you said that the roof's been leaking for a while?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, is, I'm assuming it's doing more damage, the longer we leave it leaking?
I mean, the floor tiles are all stained, um, along that one wall where the parapet is, but, um, it's, it dries up.
Yeah, water's not good.
No, it's not.
So I'd like to put this back on.
Ice makes it worse.
Ice makes it worse.
So does it leak in, in ice conditions, or year-round? What, can you tell us what's...
Year-round, if, if there's a driving rain, it'll do that, and they're hoping that maybe... Year-round, if, if there's a driving rain, it'll do that. And they're hoping that maybe by fixing the parapet and doing the fire department's-
The flashing?
Flashing, that they can stop it, so that's-
So who have you had look at it? Do you know?
I don't remember the company, but it's the same company that's doing the fire department now, gave that estimate.
So the one thing that I'd like to utilize more is the regional school. And in speaking to the Antasqua, they've been more than willing to come out and do work with us. So before we, uh, make any motions to-
But is there a Masonry work on this, and do they do Mason? I, I don't know what they're giving you.
No, that's on, that's for the, that's for the door. I'm talking the roof. The roof would be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, but what about the top, uh, things on the roof there? Those are masoned in? When they put the flashing?
We could let them-
We do, but, so before we do anything like that, I'd like to bring our regional school involved and see what they make for recommendations before we just outsource it at the tune of sixteen thousand. And, and anything seems to be a lot of money nowadays, so... Not saying they can do everything, but they might point us in the right direction as well. And, and maybe they can take it.
Do you wanna take point on getting them out there to take a look at it?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Would you ask some of the transfer station chats at all?
I will.
How much work can we give them?
Well, I don't know.
I guess we'll find out.
If we don't, if we don't ask, we won't get anything.
Right, right.
We have a hand up in the back of the room.
I have a question about the garage door. Are you guys opening it when you need to, and then closing it?
Uh, we have to go inside in a minute. Um, it's just the-
Oh, the button, doesn't it?
The buttons don't work. We put in, we put in, we got new buttons, and we got a, a new system to punch in code, and nothing seems to be working. It works sometimes, we have, doesn't, the other guy.
That's crazy.
So we just run around the side and open the door inside. So we, it just, we have to have an estimate on how much that's gonna be.
Okay. Yeah, let's get an estimate on it. That'd be great. Unless Mr. Gorman thinks he knows how to fix it.
He can fix it.
Did you just volunteer to fix it, or?
I don't know, Trish, should we have a second?
Craywards.
So special town meeting. Do you, are you looking for us to set a date for this, or?
Yeah, the, I did speak with, um, with the, the town, town clerk, Siri. He definitely had a preference. Uh, he certainly did not want it anywhere close to the presidential elections. He is strongly recommending a special town meeting date of Thursday, November fourteenth, uh, which puts us-
Halfway between the election and Thanksgiving.
Bingo.
Yeah.
So there's kind of a, a sweet spot there that it could probably work. I have not heard back from the schools yet to see if the, the cafeteria is available, but if not, I honestly don't think it'll be a, a large assembly. So we, we might have some different options, even if the cafeteria isn't available.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that date works for me.
And sadly, it works for me as well.
You good with it?
Elliot?
Yeah.
Actually, I technically might have business travel while I'm in the room.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Uh, I'll give you a motion to, um, set the, uh, special town meeting for November fourteenth.
For what time? Seven PM?
Seven PM?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion endorsement of police union contract fiscal year 2024, 2026, New England Police Melville Association.
And that's actually a perfect segue from the special town meeting. Uh, one of the reasons why the special town meeting is mandatory is the fact that, uh, we do have the police contract. Uh, I actually have the, I guess, the official copy here. Uh, we do have a memorandum of agreement with, that has been signed and endorsed by the police union. Uh, it has been double and triple-checked by town council, myself, as well as the union representation, uh, for its accuracy. So this is really kind of step one. This is necessarily needed so that they could enact the schedule shift from a five-and-two schedule to a four-and-two schedule, which will be occurring tomorrow. Well, yeah, I guess technically tomorrow at midnight. Uh, so, once the memorandum of agreement has been signed, then it's okay for the police to start adhering to their four-and-two schedule. Uh, there is a quote-unquote clean copy of the contract that, um, has just been completed, is being currently reviewed by the, uh, police union reps, and we will probably have that available for sign, or the endorsement by the board at our next meeting. So this is step one of two. And if you could make a motion to accept and endorse the memorandum of agreement, I think it would make some folks, uh, down the, down the driveway a little bit happy.
When do we, actually, but we don't sign it tonight?
Uh, yeah, you can sign it this evening. Um, I got the, I got the signature page here. Oh, actually, I take it back. I was, they only provided one signature line in the memorandum of agreement, but as you can see, we do have both union reps that have signed it, so I'll leave that to discretion of the board, if they wanna authorize a chair to endorse, or if the entire board wants to endorse.
I'll make a motion to sign the police memorandum and, uh, new contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want us to all sign that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll leave you the top one.
I almost looked like you.
So, did one of the discussions, are one of the logistics of the bygones is, uh, are the ones available to be discussed? Or, we've talked before about how that might work without knowing what the number is?
Correct.
Sometime in the future, or on November fourteenth?
Yes, probably at the next, well, cer- certainly at the special town meeting. Um, but the, um, town accountant, I just emailed her the new salary or new wage chart, uh, as well as all the different language in there. She's in the process of figuring out what that means exactly monetarily. The important thing to remember is this contract start, or started in fiscal year 24. So there is an entire year of back pay covering fiscal year 24, plus, in essence, really, the first quarter of fiscal year 25. So there's a considerable amount of back pay that is owed to the police officers. So that's, that's gonna, gonna be figured out right now. Um, I believe that's gonna be paid in one lump check to each of the police officers. And then, obviously, as soon as that's all figured out, their pay will reflect the changes going forward.
Can we have an indication of the, this, what we estimated was anywhere close to what's actual, or no?
Uh, from my understanding, there was nothing that was set aside in the fiscal year 25 budget that was voted for at town meeting.
And nothing was encumbered in it?
Yes, correct, and nothing encumbered. So this is all gonna be, I'll refer to it as new money.
Because I think you estimated once it's a seven percent increase, or the, or the, what do you mean? I don't know, the release one. Um, so if it's, that might not include last year, well, that would cover some of this year's story. Uh, okay, well, we'll see what it is.
I think it's a big number.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any changes in this police contract, anything drastic? I hear you were gonna do four days on, whatever.
Correct. It's four days on, two days off.
Is that, is that something new?
Yes, that's something that-
And how does that impact financially on the town core field? And, and does that mean they get more money per month with this four days on?
Not necessarily that, that they make more money per month. I mean, they will, because there are increases in their wages built into the, into the new contract, but specifically by doing the, uh, changing from a five-and-two schedule to a four-and-two schedule, you know, there's no inherent increase in, unless, if you, I guess the argument could be made that there, you may incur additional overtime, but until that's realized, it, it's not additional money.
They went from a five-and-two schedule to a four-and-two. They, at the five-and-two, they worked an eight-hour shift. At the four-and-two, it's an eight-and-a-half hour shift. Is that correct?
So they're gonna gain at the end of the month something by not working?
I mean, there's, there's an increase from year to year, but I don't think it's a significant increase from the four-and-two, or from the five-and-two to the four-and-two, based on the number of hours they're working at with the four-and-two. They're working an additional half hour per shift.
And how much of an increase did they, how much of an increase did, did they go up, per hour or per week, or it's increased?
Actually, probably the easier thing is, since this is now a, a public document, I can provide a copy.
It's what?
I, I can provide a copy, just, if, if you just see, um, the town clerk and just put a records request in, we could provide you a copy of that.
But you can't tell us-
The whole contract.
You can't tell us that I had a department form or kind of an increase that was-
Well, we'll have to, the, the night of the form.
So, so, I, I mean, there's a whole table. The amount of increase depends on what, what step and grade the officer is. So can we tell you how much a particular officer is getting different?
No, I'm just curious if there was some, a flat across the, the board percentage-wise?
No.
No.
No, it's, it's a totally, it's a totally new, refreshed table, based off of a bunch of negotiations about where to start and where to finish on the pay grade. So it's not a, it's not an easy, like, here's the one number, that's, that's what the raise is.
And there's actually two charts, because there's an officer chart and a sergeant chart.
Yeah, so we're happy to share the document with you, but it's not an easy, like, it's not a-
It's not like three percent.
What's the X, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Because of the step, and the grade.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think the point is probably that it's, it's more than what we're getting budgeted, perhaps. That's, that's the one thing that I was questioning. I'm not sure about.
I don't know what you budgeted to make the comparison. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the info for you, but I think it's-
Oh, no, but it was, it was sort of in the transition, so that's why, um, you don't remember, right, did you, what the?
No. Next item, open meeting law violation response filed nine eleven twenty-four regarding eight fifteen twenty-four.
As I say, if, if, yeah, if the board approves the response, if you could just make a motion to allow me to endorse the response, and then I can hand that to the complainant, as well as send it off to the attorney general's office.
Make a motion that we authorize, uh, Bron to sign and, and deliver the, uh, both the nine eleven twenty-four open meeting law violation and the, uh, seven twenty-two twenty-four violation.
Is it the seven? I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Why was the response on the seven twenty-two so late? It's supposed to be done in, what, fourteen?
Uh, fourteen business days, correct. And I will freely admit that one fell through the cracks, because there was actually two open meeting law violations occurring at the same time on the same meeting that were, I guess, fairly similar in, in their, the complaints. And as a result, one was addressed well within the fourteen business days, yet the other one was not. Uh, so basically, what's occurring now is a bit of catch-up, if you will.
Okay. Now, we discussed this several times in the past open meeting laws, that you were gonna approve it, look it over, and then you were gonna give it to Brad, and he was gonna proofread it to make sure there was no problems.
The agendas, correct.
And, and, and we still have this problem going on right now.
I'm, I'm not aware of a recent issue with the agendas.
Well, so one thing was the figures were stated at one point, and, but the figures weren't the same as in the minutes. You stated certain figures at the meeting, but they weren't the same figures, uh, in the minutes.
And that's been correct.
Correct, yeah, that, that was corrected.
Everything that you said has been correct.
And then, and then on the agendas, those certain items were supposed to be checked by you, and then Brad was supposed to approve them again, to proofread them, make sure that we didn't have this problem. And we went back again with the same problem again.
I don't believe these are, are new allegations with regards to the agenda.
Some, one of them was, yes.
Um, but that one was, I believe that was dated back to the, the seven twenty-two.
Right, that's right, yeah.
That's the quote-unquote old one. So that's the one that fell through the cracks.
Right, so that's why I'm trying to get, get a handle on it, to say, you know, are we kinda-
Yes, yes, we, we-
We're gonna have a check and balances, what, is what, is what you told me before.
Correct, yep.
And it didn't happen, so that's why I'm asking you-
We're striving to be better, Dave.
Okay, alright.
I mean, this is, this is taxing the board that, like-
Yeah, okay.
We have important stuff, but this is-
No, no, I understand that, okay. But it is also important, though, too.
Yeah, and in, in fairness, the allegations from the, the seven twenty-two was really before we put the new process and, and checks and balances in place, but since then, it appears to be working fine.
Okay. Alright, very good, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the three twenty-one, the seven twenty-five, and the eight fifteen. And the five-two.
And the five-two minutes, as written.
Second, and, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have any other items. Um, so now we'll make-
Motion to enter executive session under exemption to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations.
And the 5/2 minutes, as written.
Second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have any other items. So, now we'll make-
Motion to enter executive session under exemption two, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct corrupt bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kudelski, aye.
Chaffey, aye.